Hey, well, we'll get started. Buenos dias. Thanks, everyone, for coming and attending and your interest in this important public health and worker protection effort that we're calling the Essential Workers' Bill of Rights. A little bit of history, since I'm the old guy here on the presentation, a little bit of the history, although I think we all know that we've been discussing this topic for the last five years in our community. This is not something new. This is not something that's suddenly been sprung. This is something we've been talking about, and a lot of people have had a commitment to for a long time. So, the question is, how much longer do we need? We're in the midst of an emergency, a declared public health emergency. The COVID-19 pandemic highlights the societal threat posed by the lack of paid sick leave. How much consideration to the economic impacts has been given? Quite a bit, as has been said. We've been talking about the economic impacts now for five years. Last year, the most recent study, the UNM Bureau of Business and Economic Research, studied extensively. The previous proposal was very similar to the permanent proposal we're proposing now. So I think the economic research is there for anyone to see. I do want to address the accusation that somehow this is sneaky, that we're trying to sneak paid sick leave under the cover of the pandemic. Well, no, as I said before, the pandemic highlights the need for paid sick leave, and we'd be better off today if we had that policy in place. And in this public emergency, we're now in the middle of the gradual opening up of the economy. That means more workers, more frontline workers are out there interacting with the public. And again, this caused us to come forward with the emergency provisions. So there are three emergency provisions under the Essential Workers' Bill of Rights. These all have to do with the COVID emergency. One requiring personal protection be provided by the employers and that proper care be given by employers as to personal protection on their workplace. The other one, connected to the already passed and passed by great majorities in the United States Congress and signed by President Trump, the Families First Act, which does provide for paid sick leave up until the end of the pandemic. And we also have a bill calling for hazard pay for frontline workers. This would only apply to larger employers of 50 or more and would provide hazard pay for people who are going to be on regular contact with the general public and who are otherwise low-paid workers. We did, we do also, as I've said, are proposing permanent paid sick leave, but not to commence until 2021. There's no rush being proposed on that. And as to the council process, yes, we do not, we've not been regularly conducting public council meetings. We're conducting our business on emergency matters remotely, and we're just now starting to convene committees remotely. But up until now, all the council actions have been direct actions by the full council, so there was no effort to somehow hide our bills. They were appropriately presented to the city council and will be considered by the full council. Unfortunately, we did have a glitch, and that had to do with publication of the paid sick leave portion of this. And the Albuquerque Journal was not, there was some glitch where they did not publish the legal advertisement. And so we are, now I'm announcing today that we're going to be breaking out the two pieces of the paid sick leave bill. The emergency one, which will be considered on Monday, and the permanent one, which will have to wait until August because of this technical glitch in publication of the legal advertisements by the Journal. We stand in support of our essential workers, and we'll now hear some of their stories. And I neglected to introduce my co-sponsor, and really, who's done so much of the work on this, Lanza Senna, but she'll take it from here, and we're going to hear from the essential workers. And Councilor Senna will wrap up at the end. Thank you.
Hi. This is me. I am Alma Martell, and I'm a mother of family, and I'm here to be heard. Community of Areole means we are one. So for now, we know all the needs that the community needs, they have for this situation, this pandemic, and not only for the pandemic in our lives. Our stories are old and true. All the people that we were talking, they're very afraid of this situation. And we have families that, we are families. We have families that are not just numbers, and we are not only a payroll. We are humans, and we're good people who love our families and work hard to give them a better life and cover them their needs. We have a big responsibility to be safe, so they can be safe too. Our kids are the future of this country. Now, now it's the time to pass sick leave. And hazard pay, and hazard pay. If the city had acted years ago like we called them to do, our lives wouldn't be static-tick in the daily COVID counts. We need paid sick leave because we are value. Our, excuse me, I really believe in paid sick leave and hazard pay. It's about humanity, and we deserve it. As a worker and as a family member, we are at the front of this situation, and we have to go to work in dangerous. And when we come back to our home, we put our families in danger too. So we deserve this. We are the ones who fight every single day, and we woke up and go to work. And we have to have this now. It's no reason for not having it. It's no reason for pushing it back. We have to have it because it's very important for families and mothers that are single and their head at home. So they have to go to work, and they have to live their kids. And if they get sick, they don't, they don't have paid sick leave. They don't have the choice to get up to work and go to take care of their kids. They have to work. So that's not fair. That's not fair. So we support the workers because workers need to be healthy to go to work and support business. Business, we are, we know that they're important in this situation. We know for sure that. But if there's no workers healthy, there's no business. So you have to do it now.
Good morning. My name is Marian Mendez Serra, and I'm a community organizer with El Centro de Igualdad de Derechos, an organization in Albuquerque, New Mexico, with over 500 members, which of whom the majority are low-wage workers, immigrant workers. The COVID-19 public health pandemic has caused an economic crisis and unprecedented challenges for our communities, our state, and in our entire country. The pandemic has also exposed existing social, racial, and economic inequalities. We have been fighting for paid sick leave for over five years. And if the city has passed an ordinance, we would currently have an important tool to curb the spread of COVID and to support the health and safety of essential workers right now. As we all know, low-wage immigrant workers play a vital role in New Mexico's economy as workers, taxpayers, and consumers. We are proud porqueños. And in addition, immigrant workers are currently working in the front lines, actively responding to the needs of the nation as we face a coronavirus pandemic, from working in the healthcare to cleaning industry to childcare and in all aspects of the food chain. Low-wage workers are situated in key industries and are more crucial than ever in these times of crisis. But although low-wage workers are being recognized as essential, we are being treated as we are expendable. Most in our community do not have access to paid sick leave to tend to our health and safety during this pandemic, in addition to not qualifying for federal relief or unemployment. For example, in an informal survey that we conducted out of the Centro with our membership, out of approximately 85 workers, almost 50% have experienced reduction of hours. 35% have lost their jobs. And most of them have no access to sick leave. Approximately 40% did not receive any federal stimulus check, and almost 60, nobody in the family qualifies for unemployment. Our members are in a financial crisis and are struggling just to pay basics needs, such as food, rent, and utilities. Our community cannot afford to miss a day of work without pay. Not only should paid sick leave be a fundamental human right, but it should be part of our city's public health to plan to curb the spread of COVID-19. No worker should have ever to make a decision of missing a day's work of pay or attending their health and ensuring that they're not COVID-positive. Under this pandemic, El Centro has drastically seen an uptick of worker cases around safety and health. For example, several weeks back, when we spoke with a group of workers that work at a company that does retail and wholesale food production, workers learned there was a positive case of COVID-19, yet there was no PPE offered, no distancing, no sanitizing. Workers collectively raised concerns, yet they were told by the employer they could leave anytime if they weren't satisfied, that they had multiple applications to get more workers in their positions immediately. The lack of action around safety and health in this business by the workers led to spreading and infecting seven more workers. And recently, they found out that a worker had died from COVID in the establishment, which is why not only paid sick leave is essential for workers right now, but also access to PPE and hazard pay. As the city looks for ways to support businesses, this needs to be balanced while supporting the workers who are the cornerstone of small businesses in our economy. Albuquerque needs and can do better. This is a racial justice issue. This is a racial justice issue, once again, and an economic public health issue. Gracias.
My name is Rashid Ahmed. I work with the Bernio County Community Health Council as a public health promotion specialist. We are a public health organization located here, and we work on improving the quality of life and health in the community through coalition building, health assessment and planning, and action plans. As public health specialists, we believe that paid sick leave has been an issue for decades. We believe universal paid sick leave would help reduce spread of many diseases. It will allow workers to take care of relatives, and in turn, it will boost the economy by reducing illnesses from sick workers coming in because they cannot afford to stay at Also, there has been plenty of evidence to show that masks and other personal protective equipments are helpful in slowing spread of diseases. We have accepted hairnets. We have accepted gloves, eyewear, and many other forms of protection. And masks are just another tool in that direction. Finally, we also recognize hazard pay for many different reasons. And right now, we're asking people to work in conditions that increase risk of illnesses and death. A hazard pay will help these workers deal with the stresses and reinvest in the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you for all of those that shared your stories. For many of you know that I spoke on this issue for quite some time in my own healthcare advocacy prior to coming to council. Because of that, many of you already know my story and that I've been battling stage four cancer for the past nine years. And because many of you already know that story, I'm going to share the story of a fellow cancer fighter and the impact as to what paid sick leave would mean for them. Nicole was a government contractor. She worked for a multi-billion dollar company. When her daughter was diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic lymphoma, she did not have access to paid sick leave. What did that mean for that family? It meant that her husband, a teacher, had to quit his job to work at home to take care of their daughter. It meant that Nicole had to question whether or not she would go to work or go to an appointment with her daughter, who she felt and feared that she would not survive. She had to question whether or not she could continue to go to work, to continue to provide for her family housing, food, or whether or not she would go to her chemotherapy appointment with her daughter. This story that she shared with me, she actually told me that she had to pay maximum out-of-pocket over and over and over again. The financial impact that her family went through constantly on top of not having paid sick leave. She maxed out her vacation. She maxed out her credit cards. She constantly had to question this, while her husband had to also take care of her. And she felt that this situation that she was in, many families had to go through as well. Her story in that her daughter attending chemotherapy at a young age, having to go through that whole process without her mother there because she did not have paid sick leave. This is the story of many, many families. This was prior to the pandemic. So when I think about this story, I think about this because tomorrow, as I sit in my chemotherapy chair alone for the first time in nine years, this is what families have been going through for years because of lack of paid sick leave. So that's one story, and I want to share with you a picture of her. But, you know, I don't think I actually have to share it because as many of you go to your grocery stores at Walmart, you'll be greeted with her picture. And I want you all to look at her picture and think about the impact that paid sick leave can have for that family, that children battling cancer will not have to do this alone. So in terms of the pandemic, this has been the great equalizer. It has shown the many impacts and infrastructure issues that we have had. And when we're talking about access to paid sick leave, to hazard pay, and PPE, it is exactly that, as an equalizer. We are seeing the racial and social economic inequities now more than ever. When I think about those that have been impacted by COVID, let's look at the numbers. When we think about the studies, let's think about what studies have been made. The American Public Health Association noted the importance of having paid sick leave to stop the spread of infectious disease. The American Medical Association also made the same account, that having paid sick leave will help stop the spread of infectious disease. This has been studies for years now. And now, as we're addressing an actual infectious disease that has been like no other, what So when I think about those that have been impacted, let's look at our COVID numbers. How many have been impacted? Over 10,000 in New Mexico. How many have passed away? How sick do we have to be? If cancer is not sick enough, if domestic violence, sexual assault, if that's not sick enough, if over 10,000 New Mexicans is not sick enough, if over 2 million in America having to struggle through this and the thousands that have perish, if that's not sick enough, how sick do we have to be? When Congress passed the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, they said, "Families are first. This is essential to what we need to get to reopening." And as we, as a city, consider that, are we saying families are first? I hope so, because that's what I believe in, and that's what I think is necessary. So when we're thinking about the pandemic, we say that this is the foundation. This has already been passed. Congress has already said that this is essential. I hope my colleagues believe in that as well. When we think about the overall need for paid sick leave, it's going to be there, and we're going to fight for that as long as we have to, because we see it. Communities of colors are already seeing that impact because COVID has disproportionately impacted communities of color. They are the ones that have the least access to paid sick leave. So let's continue this conversation. We are going to continue this fight because the pandemic provision that we're fighting for, again, it's already there. We've already had this discussion. Congress believes that we need it. I believe that we need it. For the permanent paid sick leave, it's a foundation that we have needed for a long time. So again, if we believe that families are first, will Albuquerque follow suit? Thank you.
We'll take questions from the press.
What do you see in the argument that voters have already made it on this in 2017 and that your proposal is largely similar to what they voted down?
It is, it has many similarities to what was voted down by the voters in 17. If we look back on 17, when we look back on 17, we should remember that there was a lot of noise around that election about publication or, excuse me, printing the entire bill on the ballot and this and that. It went back and forth. It had to go to the county commission to get on the ballot and so forth. There was a lot of narrative outside of the content of that bill in 2017. And that bill failed, I believe, about a 1% or less of the electorate was the margin by which it failed. So that indicates to me that if we had subtracted all of that noise from that discussion, that that bill would have passed. I think the majority of people in Albuquerque support paid sick leave.
Has there been any studies done to show how much the emergency pay or the hazard pay would cost workers?
Yes, I refer to the UNM-Bieber study. That was an extensive study, so differences in this are very minor. If they need to be, if we, I'm not opposed to having Bieber weigh in on the permanent sick leave bill. I don't think, I personally don't think it's appropriate to be calling for economic impact studies on emergency provisions.
The Bieber study was for paid sick leave, not the emergency or the premium pay, right?
That's true.
Has there been any study on the premium?
There has not been any study on that. That is something that's been enacted in other cities, and so that's pretty much what it is.
Would you say that any kind of pushback or opposition to the hazard pay?
With regard to the hazard pay, there is pushback and opposition, as there is for the other bill. But, you know, we're still open for discussions with that. Councilor Senna and I are meeting with business community this week. We're open for discussion on that and make sure that that fits with Albuquerque. So, but, you know, again, the provisions of the paid sick leave bill, on the other hand, and our commitment to backing up the Families First Act, I think are, I'm not going to say they're non-negotiable, but these are longstanding community demands.
With hazard pay, it seems like it would actually be cheaper for a lot of employers to raise the wages to $15 an hour to avoid having to make that emergency premium. Is that a feature or a bug?
We are discussing with the business community the $15 threshold. Councilor Senna and I are considering options to that and discussing that also with the city administration.
But this bill is not necessarily a kind of backdoor way to just get the $15 an hour for a large company?
No, no, that was not the intention at all.
You said you're breaking up the paid sick leave into two. Are you hoping to get a vote on the premium pay on Monday?
Yes.
Do you think the results of the study from 20, I guess it was 2018 Bieber did it, right, the end of 2018?
Right.
Are still valid today?
Yes.
Despite the changes in the economy due to COVID?
Well, the changes in the economy due to COVID, if all goes well, will be over when the permanent provisions are put in place.
If the, if hazard pay is a matter of economic justice, why not apply it to smaller employers as well?
Well, the, I'll let Councilor Senna.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
If the hazard, if you're making the hazard pay argument based on economic justice, why apply it only to larger employers and why not smaller ones?
Well, you know, I think we're having that discussion with some of our communities to see, you know, what exactly is the impact and just having the further discussions, whether it's with the small business or larger businesses. We're having that discussion throughout this week to see about it.
So it may change.
We're just having those discussions, and everything is up for evaluation.
If I could just say, you know, we're sympathetic to businesses large and small. We're sympathetic to businesses large and small with regard to having to absorb this, right? But workers are part of the whole picture as well. And workers, when workers are suffering, businesses are going to suffer. Our whole economy is going to suffer. And in my humble opinion, as a former employer of up to 10 people myself, I consider this kind of so-called benefit, the cost of doing business, the true cost of doing business. Not just what's in the bottom line, right, but the true cost of operating, just like your rent, just like your utilities, all of these kind of things, you know. A fair economy considers the true cost, the larger cost to society. And, you know, that's kind of where I come down. I'm, again, as Councilor Senna said, on the permanent provisions, that's still going to be open for discussion. Any of these items are open for amendment on Monday. But, but to me, the question is, let's talk about a small business. Let's talk about a small business that may employ healthcare workers that go into a nursing home. that go into a nursing home to provide additional help to a resident. That may be only three employees, right? But the need doesn't change. Yeah, the economic condition of that employer is different. But the overall societal need does not change.
If the bill passes, the paid sick leave passes, and that's right right now, when will it take effect?
So for the pandemic provision, Congress enacted that to start at April 1st till December 31st. The permanent one that we are separating would start January of 2021. So that's why, you know, these three bills are critical in complementing one another to work towards essential workers and that economic justice.
If there are no other questions, we'll be available afterwards and the speakers will as well. Thanks, everyone.